Six thirty-one. Okay, well, we'll get started with the meeting. With the board. So just the rules of the thing before you speak, we'll ask for the, there's two petitions tonight. One's a continuance with the new publication and the change in the variance request. That's a continuation from a previous hearing for property on Maple and Chestnut Street. And then there is a second petition tonight for a variance for some property on the corner of the right. I think it's Corning Road in Springfield to build a garage and they need a variance for the garage. So if you speak tonight, just ask the proponents to speak, their names and their address. That's for those in favor to speak first. After they've spoken, allow anybody that opposes whatever being proposed to speak. If something new is proposed by the opponents, we'll give the proponents an opportunity to address things that were brought up by the opponent. So each of the members, in order to get the variance, you need a four or five vote. We've got five members here present tonight to be successful, but if you find you'll need four of the votes. So with three, even if you want a three-two vote, that does not grant the variance in place. You need four to five. So if someone wants to read the, the clerk will read the minutes of the meeting.
So in East Loma del Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Legal Notice. East Loma del Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty P M. In the Pleasant Valley Senior Center, three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Loma del, and via Zoom webinar. Case Z V two zero two five zero one. A petition for variance under East Loma del zoning bylaws, table three-two, frontage requirements, in which the applicant is required to have a hundred feet of frontage with adequate physical access. Currently has forty point one seven feet of frontage along Maple Street. Parcel is located on Chestnut Street. Assessors parcel IDs six one two eight A F, six one two eight G, and the residence B zoning district. Applicant Brown Meadow LLC, courtesy of Levine Law, fifty-six Summers Road, East Loma del. Information relating to applicants filed with the Department of Planning and Community Development, available for inspection at Town Hall. This is published in both July twenty-fourth and July twenty-third in the reminder.
New notices sent out to the abotters and both of it. So just to have the record show that the meeting took place and that the new notices sent to the abotters about revised petition. Attorney Levine is here.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
For having him. So again, as you recall, I was here on June twenty-third requesting the board allow access or to use Maple Street frontage for two lots, for lots that have at about twenty feet of frontage on Maple and well over a hundred feet on Chestnut, which would be adequate frontage with the request being based on that the Chestnut Street land is unbuildable and asking for to allow access off of Maple Street in order to make the lots buildable. The board, and I hope I don't speak for you, I seem to generally agree that the Chestnut portion of the land is unbuildable and unusable and to have access off of Chestnut would be would prevent, present a very large hardship to the property owner. But the board suggested that the application should be amended and will be probably rejected because there was two lots and that the applicant had created some hardship by having two lots rather than one. So after confering with my clients, they appreciate your reasoning and asked me to amend the application. So the application, I presented a new narrative to the Z B A that asks for variance for one lot. And the applicants also had a new survey prepared by Smith Associates combining the two lots and showing forty point one seven feet of frontage on Maple and a combined frontage on Chestnut of two hundred fifteen point fifty-four feet. This new A and R plan was recorded last week on book of plans four oh three, page ninety-five. I have copies of that if anybody on the board would like that. I don't know if.
Just like good for the.
Sure. Five copies. And otherwise, the reasoning I presented at the last hearing and in the application has not changed. And I will go over the factors for the variance if the board would like. Otherwise, I think we can stand on the application and my, one of these, one of my clients is here to answer any technical questions if the board has any.
So from what I can see, the, the new lot is, is combined, which yeah, it was a two lots. It would be the square footage here. It now has. Okay.
It's very small. I should give you all my copies.
So it's five point plus acres. Yeah, it's five point five, three acres. So that's going to be the new parcel, which has forty feet of frontage on Maple Street and two hundred and fifteen or thereabouts. However, the same situation exists with regard to Chestnut Street. There's vast wetlands all on the Chestnut. You'd have to bring in a ton of fill to put a driveway in, and I'm not sure you'd ever even be able to bring it in without ruining whatever wetland is there. The upland for the property is all basically on the Maple Street side. This would allow, one, my understanding from what I can see is there already is a curb cut for this parcel right where the driveway would be that's been there for years. And that would be where the location of the, the proposed driveway would run up, up that curb cut. So there wouldn't be other curb cut and we wouldn't have two lots coming out in a, in a just around the curve on a, the thing would just be one lot of us coming out onto Maple Street. But those were some of the concerns. The only concern I had is in, is the, you know, I didn't know if they had had any plans for the type of house it was going to be built and exactly where it was going to be built. I mean, I'm assuming you can build it. I mean, is the barn going to remain in the shed or I'm assuming one of those is coming down?
Hi, guys.
Hi.
My name's Mitchell Hacey. The, it's kind of up for discussion on whether the barn was going to stay. One of the plans was possibly to knock down the barn and build a house in that area.
Yeah.
And then use that driveway with the curb cut.
Yeah.
So the other plan had the house next to it, but that kind of got.
Well, that's, the question is, I mean, with the barn, the way it is, either that you move it closer up, you know, to where, where the shed is there on the parcel, up in front of the barn.
Um, I, it's probably going to be probably in that general area of the barn. The barn probably would be knocked down.
No, just I didn't know what size of house that, you know, the petition would be, you know, in terms of the size.
We didn't talk on this one. We had on the, the previous one, twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, I was, I was just about to say probably between two thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet. Nothing crazy.
Okay.
And that's, the previous plan with the two houses had both a two thousand square foot house and a twenty-five hundred square foot house roughly laid out.
Be somewhere between two thousand. I just didn't know where on the site you were going to with the revised plan.
Yeah.
Generally around.
I would say probably right there.
So there was a setback on, this, the whole plan we had did not have a setback on here. But at least forty feet behind lot H, probably more than that.
Okay.
Closer, closer to where the barn is, which is probably, probably around eighty feet.
Okay. No, I just didn't know where, where you're going to put it, obviously, from your point of view with the, you know, closer to the road, you build no less cost it is for driveway and utilities and.
Yeah.
Anything else. Anybody have any further questions? I've been through a lot of the stuff at the last hearing. Here's a new subdivision plan. Have you got it? This is pretty much, as I recall, we discussed at the last meeting. It looks as though they came back and did what we were expecting they would do. So I, I don't have any further questions or issues with it.
Jim? The driveway for two eighty-six, I think it's, it's like a horseshoe driveway, if I'm not mistaken, the house that's there.
Yeah.
It also looks like it, it's currently at least connects to the additional lot.
It used to. We cut it off so that it wouldn't.
So it no longer connects to it.
Now that's gravel.
It's, yeah, one.
Yeah, I mean, it's the gravel to the barn, but.
We paved it.
All right.
If it were to get approved, we put up probably a piece of guardrail there to separate it so that they didn't turn around there. But the pavement, the new asphalt does end.
So it won't be a common driveway.
Won't be a common driveway. No.
That was my question.
The size of the proposed driveway.
Lengthwise?
Uh, widthwise.
Uh, there, it's in the bylaws, I believe, on the minimum.
I think it's, I'm not sure. It might be twelve feet.
Ten or twelve, I think it is, yeah.
I believe the curb cut right now is about twelve.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you've got plenty of room there. So that doesn't, I don't think that affects.
I'm sure you'd want to build it as narrow as you could to avoid the, just on the, on the basis of the thoughts of asphalt. But it's got to be wide enough to make practical use of it.
Yeah.
A moving van down it, so on emergency vehicles.
Agreed.
So, um, so I'm sure the building department would want to know about that. I don't know if that needs to be part of our approval or not. Maybe it does. I don't think it does. No, you don't think so.
It wouldn't be issued unless it met.
Unless it met, though.
Also, both departments of fire and building saw these plans before the hearing. They didn't have any comments or anything about driveway widths. I know typically certain length, I think it's over two hundred feet if you want it to be twenty feet wide. I don't see you getting that distance at all with this driveway.
At the curb cut, it's not twenty feet, but you, there's quite a bit of room between where we stop driveway to the property line. There's probably.
Yeah.
To over twenty something feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that looks like a better location than where it is, like you were saying, Mitch, so.
To the shed, it, it's at least a hundred and twenty feet. I, I can't see yet deep. I, I can't see what that first length is.
Hard to see.
Agreed.
I think you're way under what.
Yeah.
Just agreed. Wasn't sure there.
No further questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in opposition?
Yeah.
Hi, you can stand up here if you want. That's fine. Just sign, sign your name and address.
If you could sit close up here so the mic can pick you up, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
At our first meeting, I think I asked this question. Um, what's changed? I don't understand.
Okay, he, uh, he was going for to get two.
I, I'm not talking about that. He can build nine houses if he wants. Why are we going to change a variance that's been in place for forty years?
Well.
Even longer. Albert died in nineteen eighty-six. I had to look it up. So Nealon took possession of that property before Albert died, certainly. I don't know how many years he had it. So we've already had this discussion. My parents fought this. Nothing was ever built. So if the variance is the variance, it's there for a reason. The hardship, there's no hardship other than he bought a property that he can't build on and you can't use Chestnut Street. There's not enough fill in the United States because you'll sink. So I guess I'm.
But I mean, that's.
Like, I don't, I don't have anything against Josh and him, but if you start to do this for them and not just them, but somebody else is going to come forward. You're supposed to be protecting us. I, like, it's not going to affect me. Those people live on Maple Street. I, I might see the house when it finally gets built or doesn't get built through the trees, but I, I'm just confused. I don't know.
But so the variance is in, you have a situation with the unique lot. So you have a, a unique lot here that has a ton of frontage that if you have regular land there because of the soil conditions, i.e. the wetlands, you would normally be able to come right off of Chestnut Street.
Exactly. I get that.
Any issue whatsoever. The problem is he can't access it through the frontage. So he has to come in on Maple Street and there just isn't a hundred feet of frontage on Maple Street. So he has to get a variance to, to build on it. He's got five acres of land.
But three and a half of them he.
But Diane Shand, he's still got a two plus acre.
Yes.
Land that he can build on, that he has a curb cut to, to get back to the property. And it's, you know, the use that he's making as a residential, I think that would be, you know, both advantageous to the town and to the, to the neighborhood, to, you know, another house. I don't think.
If you were living there, you might not feel that way.
Well, I, and I, and it's hard to say. I mean, it, 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 it'll.
I guess I'm trying to just understand, like, how does this all roll out? I get you can't use Chestnut Street. I mean, that's.
Right. And that's, that's what the hardship is about, the Chestnut Street parcel. I mean, what Mr. Nealon did with the property and why he didn't do what he did, I have no idea.
Because they told him no. As Mr. Mr. Carabetta, who spoke in the first meeting, he was going to buy that property. And he was told no by two different people. I don't know if he's.
But you have what needed. The difference between being told no or, or being told what you, what you think you might be able to do and actually coming before a board and requesting permission are two different things. I understand where you're coming from. Now, why is it that, that people seem to have been prevented to do what this gentleman is now seeming?
And I give him credit for his tenacity to continue fighting. I just.
I understand. And, and like.
Taxpayer. I don't get it.
Right. And, and like you, we have nothing against, we want to help the residents as well. But when someone can demonstrate under our bylaw and under mass general laws that they deserve the relief they've requested, then we have to give it to them regardless of how people feel who may have lived adjacent to it for many, many years without having to look at someone's house because for years no one really ever tried very hard. So it, because I wouldn't vote for this if, if, if there was no grounds for it, regardless of how you might feel. I just.
No. Like I said, I'm never going to.
Variants.
I just.
Variants. Right.
This was taken care of however many years ago, and the answer was no.
It wasn't taken care of. And, and anytime people seek relief under zoning in any community, anywhere, I used to do it for a living. It's all, it's always subject to the times and timing and who's on.
And who's on the, and so that's why a variance should be a variance.
And a political thing.
I, I get it. So once this gets passed, what are their next steps? Because somebody else along the way could say no, correct? I mean, I'm just asking.
No, they, they've got to go with a variance. It now allows them to go with a building permit, to seek a building permit to build. And the police, the fire, you know, everybody will sign off if they meet the code. The variance doing, they don't meet, the build on this is the frontage. They have more than enough square footage in the zone they're in. It's a lot, lot more than what you're required to have. And I think it's a good use. They up.
Not on Maple Street, but yes.
No, no, I understand. I mean, it's, it's, that's why it's a unique lot because it has, you know, basically the frontage on Chestnut is unusable, which I think is what creates the hardship here because normally you'd have your roadway coming in through Chestnut Street. But you, the upland is all on the other side of a massive wetland back there that you're never going to.
A culvert that you can't, you couldn't even, to get a road, I don't even know.
And you got, you got the sewer line that runs through there and everything else. Yeah.
To the left of it. So it's not, I, I get that piece. I guess I, I'm just saying a variance is a variance for a reason.
Right. And that's what the reason is. You have to show a hardship related to the, the soils, the topography. And that's what he's shown, at least in my opinion.
I would, and I would.
The other members agree.
I'm not, I'm just.
Agree, that's, that's.
I, my worried is down the road and I, it won't affect me because there's no other land that you can build on around me. But for somebody else to come before this board, the same thing happen and it's, I don't know if we're setting a bad precedent. I, I don't know.
It's a single family use on a, two, you know, two plus usable acres of land, which is much larger than a lot of the other lots that are on Maple Street.
So.
I grew up in a situation like this in Long Meadow where we lived up against unimproved land. And my father used to brag back in the sixties, no one's ever going to be able to build behind us. And that was true for like fifteen years. He used to call the people that would prevent that from happening, the bird and bunny people. This is precursor to the EPA. But sure enough, somebody bought land back there and it was developed, even though there were a lot of challenges. There's Culvers, the sewers, been through Long Meadow Country Club, you know, and, and unfortunate, and I didn't like it. You know, any more than you probably, you know, you wince a little bit when you see what was, you know, just.
Well, I mean, I have a, I have a pork chop lot right next.
I understand.
My neighbors in line with my built-in pool in the backyard.
Right.
Lovely people. We get along great. My mother was distraught when they were building that.
I hope is.
It's what it is.
My hope is the applicant hears you loud and clear tonight.
No, they're good.
And, and, and it is sensitive to.
You know what? And the other, are you going to live there? Like, I, I just, you know, here an LLC comes in, great. You bought the property. Now you're going to build a house. Are you actually living in it? Like, that bothers me a little bit. You know, if you're going to live into my community and you want this change, and I know we can't make them, but I just feel like it's a money grabber on that sense. But I'm not, I'm not here to judge him. I'm just talking about.
I understand.
The variance and just like, ah, you know, my parents did this already and I'm in the home now and I'm not going to fight it, but it is what it is. So.
And we understand. We don't grant them lightly.
No, I know.
Test of the law. You know, sometimes you're granting variances that personally you may not agree with.
Yeah.
You know, and you understand that the shoe is on the other foot, but we're up here just interpreting what the law says.
And as you should. So I appreciate that. And I, I do appreciate the work that you do. I'm not trying to upset anyone. I'm just, you know, it's, it's the first time in, I don't even know. My dad died in nineteen ninety-nine. So I, we're going back, that, we've even talked about that land and Mr. Nealon was good friends with my parents. So that's all. I'm just trying to figure it out. I don't know. I wish him the best of luck or whatever, but thank you.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments? Yeah. It just.
Unclear as to where the house is going to be built.
So.
Are we assuming that the park is going to be taken down?
We don't know that for a fact. I mean, there, there, it's going to be built, you know, if you take it, it's going to be built in the back. If you look at the new plan, this, I mean.
Yeah, that, sir, I don't, I don't have.
Yeah, well, this is, this is, this is the new subdivision plan. That's what I was asking, where the building is going to, it's going to go somewhere with, between the shed and the barn in that area. The barn may come down, it may not, but it's going to be back toward the barn in the area. So it's going to be a good, you know, I'm thinking seventy, eighty feet behind the rear line of the house that's on Maple Street. Never mind the house. It would probably be another thirty or forty feet on that. So it's going to be over a hundred feet away from the, you know, and you've got a lot of land in East Loma del where people's backyards butt each other and you don't have that. And the back is never going to get developed, that, that the area, if you took a line and went straight across with a wetland sort of end, that's never going to be used. It's just going to be open space.
See, it's straight back. This is.
So like.
The hell, it drops to. You can see very easily.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's totally flat.
So this area here is, the area is going to be filled by, and it's unfortunately, you can't get there from Chestnut Street.
One family home?
The single family, that's what was both attractive to me because it's keeping with the neighborhood. You know, we don't have somebody who wants to put in low income housing or something and, and cram it in a small lot. But I think it benefits the, the town as well as the, the neighborhood and it'll be in keeping with the uses in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I just had.
Okay.
Some outrun.
I sub division back, so they get yours. I look in your backyard, you look in my backyard. You're going to look where about, we're not trying to do anything. All the craziness from Long Meadow. What that school with.
Okay, Anthony Trivado.
Sir, can you, I know, microphone, yeah, it's fine. Microphone, I'm going to pick you up if you're so close to it. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, two sixty-eight Maple Street. I'm hearing a lot of possibly, maybe. Where are the specifics? Where exactly is this house going to, maybe we'll tear the barn down, maybe we won't. You know, I'm not, I would never against, you know, the, the house being, I mean, it's going to be one house.
I don't.
Saying that. Why don't we have any specifics here?
Because they, they haven't made up their mind, but they'll have to meet whatever the codes are required. So they're going to have to be off the setback lines that are required. The house is going to have to have utilities. It's going to have to have an adequate driveway.
The question is.
But I can't tell you what.
Have the specifics why we have in the meeting.
Because they're not required. They're trying to make.
And I would like to have specifics.
They don't have to have specifics on the building here. They're going to require, they do have to explain.
Location of the building?
Well, he's given a rough location. That's why I asked where the, it's going to.
Oh, we're rough.
But I can't tell them they have to put it right in this particular spot.
No, well, we could narrow it down to.
Yeah, I mean, he basically said it's going to be somewhere from back of the shed to the barn in that area.
In that area.
You know what? It's wherever he has the legal right to put it. This board does not have the authority to opine over where he puts it. Wherever he puts it has to meet code. We don't have that right. This is not the planning board. It gets involved in aesthetics and things like that. It's not up to us. So we don't require a detailed plan showing the exact placement of the house. All we're doing is giving him the ability to potentially build a single family home. If he can't meet the requirements, then he's not going to be able to build a single family home. But we're basically saying we're going to, we're, are finding out hardship based on the frontage that you don't have a hundred and feet.
No, I mean, you know.
All we're doing is making it into a building.
My question is, why aren't there any specifics here? I mean, that's quite a bit of land, right?
Correct.
And, you know, so if.
To answer that question for you. We explained to you that it isn't in our purview. We don't require them to submit plans that show the more detailed plans that you've requested now four or five times here. Yeah. Okay, you, you're asking for the same thing over and over again, and I think the question's been answered. Yeah, I mean, this building has, there's height requirements in the city. He can't be too close to a sideline. So if, once I, I create a building lot, if I set the square, you can put the house anywhere you want on that building lot as long as it meets all the setback requirements, your building is not too high, it's served by water and sewer. It's just like in a vacant lot that people buy and sell and there's a lot of vacant, what they call in parcels within the town where a person has a lot next to their home that a fifty by a hundred person can build a home on that, whether I like it or not. But he has to meet the requirements of the setbacks requirements because that's what state law says and that's what we're, we're doing. So yeah, I can't tell them he has to put it in this spot on his lot. That's not part of our.
No, you can't tell him, but he can tell us, right?
He could tell, he's going to eventually have to give that to the, the building inspector, a plan showing exactly with the plot plan and a building plan that he gives to the, to the building and applies for a building permit. If he doesn't meet the requirements, he will not get a permit.
I, I mean, I, I don't know why we don't have that now. That's what I don't understand.
No, no, I understand. I, but I can't force him to give me that to say, okay, I want this type of house. It's got to be a Cape house. It's got to be a, a.
That, all masses, where, where is the house? Approximately, where is it going to be?
And that's what, that's what, it's going to be in this area here, somewhere in here. Very right in here. He said somewhere from the shed to back to here.
Okay.
Well, that's roughly where it's going to be and it's going to be well behind this lot because he said it's going to be behind the shed and it may go all the way back to the barn. And the barn might come down. He hadn't determined.
Well.
So I mean, that's. He had the legal right to do that. And if it was your land, you'd want, you'd want that, right? You wouldn't want somebody. Trying to dictate to you where on your own lot you can put.
But I mean.
That's what.
No, if you're going to build something, you got to tell somebody.
We're not giving a building permit. See, that's, I think you're confusing us with issue a building department, a, a building permit. We, we, all we're being asked to do. Is grant a variance. So that, that, that's what we're considering, a variance.
Granting a variance, knowing where the house is actually going to go?
No, it doesn't work like that. No.
Doesn't work.
It doesn't work that way.
Okay. I just, uh, I, I don't quite understand it. Maybe it's my fault. I don't know.
Any other comments?
Exhausted, uh, everybody in the audience.
Okay. Um, any questions?
No.
Questions? Do you have a motion to close?
Here, right here, yeah.
So moved.
Almost.
Second kid? Okay, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Um, do we have any motions to either approve, disapprove, uh, the variance and reasons why?
Up the building department now.
Well, as far as what building gets built, but the question is, uh, does someone want to make a motion to either approve or not approve?
Make a motion to approve it.
Yeah.
Uh, as per the plan, the, the information that's been submitted on the basis that applicant has. He submitted a plan that complies with the concerns raised at the previous meeting. Which were, uh, that, that, uh, we understood the width of the driveway and. Uh, better understood where on the lot the dwelling or might be placed. And that a variance, uh, under the mass general laws, uh, comports, uh, with the, with the request of the applicant.
Yeah, I would just find them the hardship, you know, in terms of the soil shaped topography is the steep hill coming off of. And the wetlands and the soils that you just can't build from that area. So you can't foot a driveway. So I think, and it's also unique, there's not another lot. In that area that has that, that situation. I think it's for the good of both the town and the, and the neighborhood. At least you'll know what's going to be developed here. It's going to be a single family home, which is in keeping with what's there now. It's not going to be any, anything different. Hopefully it's as nice, if not nicer than the homes that are there. Um, I can't, you know, guarantee what he's going to build, but he's invested quite a bit of money, so hopefully he builds a, a good house. I can't tell him what he has to build. And I think it's, it benefits the, the community, and I don't think it derogates from the intent. He's going to have frontage on Maple Street. There already is a curb cut. Cars are, you know, that have accessed that piece have used that curb cut in the past. And it'll be a dedicated driveway just to the parcels. So, um, I think that, that adds to the safety of it. So I think it meets all those and. It's a benefit to the town. It's going to be improvement to the land, uh, and the town will benefit as well by higher tax dollars. Hopefully as a building lot compared to what, what he had before.
So I got a motion out there, right?
Yeah, motion. Anybody second that?
Second.
Brad? Okay, we'll take a vote, a roll call vote. We'll start down with you.
I'll prove it according to what we had.
Jim?
I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor.
I'm in favor.
Doesn't matter what I say, because we got four, but I'll, I'll say this, that between June and today. There hasn't been any change in my mind in, in what the, the, the topography and the soil conditions are. What has changed, I think, is the nature of the permit. What was two homes going in with two driveways that were going to be crammed into Maple Street, um, is now one. And I think, and Mark, you said that the safety getting into, out of the accessing grass onto Maple Street. With one driveway versus two with one single family home, um, is much more in, in, uh. Keeping with the neighborhood, uh. So I'm, so I'm there.
Okay, so.
Well said. I agree.
So in, in this particular case, the variance has been granted. There's a twenty day appeal period. Do you have a right to appeal to the court? Uh, if you don't like the decision and the court could theoretically appeal, uh, you wouldn't be able to get a building permit till the twenty day appeal period expires. And, and if someone files an appeal. You theoretically could still apply and get a permit, but you're building at your risk if you get overturned. Yeah, which means, you know, I'm not sure a bank would give you any financing for that.
That's the small, that's, that's the small print.
Yeah.
Large print give it and the small print take it away.
So, but that, but there is a twenty day appeal period from when we filed with the town clerk. Usually it takes a day or two to get it filed, throw it up the decision, I'll sign it and file it with the clerk.
Yep, and I'll reach out and I'll get that process started tomorrow too and have him review it and go from there. And then there's also a, it's a one year time limit to.
Begin on the construction, yeah.
You have the right to extend it by six months after that one year period has passed on the variance, but any questions? Okay. Awesome. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to get.
Sure. Uh, one thing we forgot to do.
Yeah, we forgot the minutes.
Minutes.
The minutes, but I was going to do that at the end if we could, since I've got people here. We've got a second matter on for tonight. It's a ground some property on Dwight Road, uh, in Corning Street. The clerk will read, read the minutes and open the hearing.
Running Slum Meadows Only Board of Appeals holds a public hearing on Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M in the Pleasant Valley, excuse me, Pleasant View Senior Center. Three twenty-eight North Main Street, Islam Meadow. And via Zoom webinar. Case ZV two zero two five zero two, a petition for variance under Islam Meadow zoning bylaws, table three two. In which the applicant is requesting relief from the side and rear yard setbacks to construct a five hundred square foot garage at three sixty-seven Dwight Road and Islam Meadow. Assessors parcel ID three four seven seven nine in the Residence C zoning district. Applicant, Thomas Whitcup. Three sixty-seven Dwight Road, Springfield, Mass. Information related to applicants filed with the Department of Planning and Community Development is available for public inspection. This was published again on both July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first. And the reminder. I believe a buddy notices were sent in both Springfield and Islam Meadow for this.
It was also posted, you know. So, uh, from a jurisdictional point, we can hear the case. Um, so I think you heard what I had to say. If you want to come forward, write your name down and give your presentation.
Thomas Whitcup, owner of the property at three sixty-seven Dwight Road, Springfield is the address. There's a small portion of the property that's in Islam Meadow, where there's currently a carport. The driveway comes off of, uh, Corning Street. Uh, I'd like to put a garage in place of the carport. That's suitable in size to, to store one vehicle and a small camper trailer and also yard, uh, tools. Really, it's the best spot on the lot because the driveway is coming from Corning Street. South side of the property is on the corner of Corning and Dwight Road, and I don't believe there's enough, it's, it's in Springfield. I don't believe there's enough room in that space to fit the garage. The only other space would be in the north side of the property. Which would have, we'd require moving the driveway onto Dwight Road. It's a very busy street. Entering and exiting from that is not ideal. So unfortunately, the. The lot is, is, uh, shaped in a, in a way that, uh. I believe they did it this way in order to make a building lot behind. When we were looking at the house back in two thousand and one. We didn't, we weren't aware that the, um, lot had been broken up. There was no house there yet on Corning Street. And, um, so we weren't really aware that of the shape of the lot. Uh, other than the plot plan that we had, but, you know, we didn't, we were actually kind of young. We weren't really paying, paying that much attention to it, but. When they put up the house and other people that put up fences, it, it kind of, it shrinks that area, which is why, you know, in order to fit the garage there. It's not going to meet the setback requirements.
So what, what, what kind of relief, what does he need? He needs.
Well, he needs, so the, the issue comes down to where our zoning, uh, is set, that if you have a detached structure. Behind the primary structure, then you have a smaller setback requirement. You could go within, I think, five feet of the property line.
So this is behind the.
You're behind the house. The problem here is it's not behind the house. Uh, but I did have one question here is. Um, your, uh, direct proposed garage only going to be twenty feet. The house is twenty point nine feet. Whether or not, um, rather than creating, do we need a variance to, to, since it's moved forward, or do we. Move the thing back so it's twenty point nine feet from Corning Street and instead of a five foot variance, it grant, you know, the five feet.
Less of a variance on that side.
On that side, well, the side, yeah. The back would be four feet probably, but because you have twenty point nine feet, so you had a point nine feet with the, with the garage to make it even with the front of the house.
The front of the house is actually on Dwight Road.
No, no, I understand, but the side of the house there to make, match up with the line on Corning Street. Cause your corner lot is the problem, and you got to meet.
We have two front setbacks.
Right.
Yeah.
Lot.
Even though it's your side of your house.
That's what makes this a, a, a problem in Massachusetts. It's based a lot, a career on.
And that's, that's why I'm here is because.
Yeah, no, no, the question I had is whether or not you could move the back point nine feet. The beginning of the garage, so the side, otherwise I think we'd have to grant a variance in addition to what you're asking for, for the frontage. Because you're, you're, you're moving the, the frontage. You're accepted because you can go to the house where the house is, it's a pre-existing use, and you could build up to the, to the line of the house without a variance.
Okay.
Here, you're going back only twenty feet and the house is twenty point nine feet.
But isn't this same, but you see the shape.
What is the?
From the house to Corning is twenty point nine.
Okay.
And so the garage essentially has to be twenty point nine, or you need an additional variance and.
Well, in order to fit the twenty-five feet, which is.
Right, but no, we would ask you change the variance in the back to make it.
Take the five to a four.
Make it to four.
Yeah, I don't think four would be enough though, because the, the current, the, the carport that's there is a twelve by twenty. And it's five feet off of both, you can see the jog in the property. It's five feet off of both of those.
So I'm just looking at your plan, like you drew.
Yeah.
So you have five feet behind the back of the garage.
Yes.
If you move this back point nine, you're going to have four point, uh.
Yeah, point point one.
One.
Yeah, because taking point nine. But then the, see the twenty-five feet, that still brings it beyond.
The twenty-five feet is, is, is this.
Yeah, we're not changing the dimensions of the garage.
Not the garage.
Just in the back of the garage.
I'm going to push it back point nine feet, so it's going to go like this, so you're twenty-five feet. It'll still be twenty-five feet.
Yeah, but it still comes beyond the, the house.
It won't go beyond the side here. So in other words, this, this line will be continued straight like this.
Yeah.
Your garage will go back twenty-five feet.
I thought, well, like I said, that the, the current carport is a, is twenty feet deep and it's in.
The current carport might infringe on the.
Here's your current carport here, according to the plan.
Yes, so it's currently in line with the house in the front, so we're adding an additional five feet onto it. So that's why, I mean.
He wants, he needs to come further.
Right, but I'm talking about from the street. This is, there's no street here.
No, there's not.
So the, the, it's, what happens is you have to either meet, because I, the frontage is like, the back setback is like forty feet, but because you have a house. In the, there already.
But you didn't see, that's why I was out.
The front, so you're just carrying in here, and so we had granted.
Twenty-five?
Granted, so you got to have four feet here and four feet here. So you could push this back another foot, which will make it in line. So because otherwise I've got to give you a variance for the front. I got to give you this and this.
Okay.
So you need three, you only applied for two.
Yes.
This would, right, and this would get you to the same place.
Right, right.
Is that, is that still slope up there, right?
Uh, not that portion of the property.
It doesn't.
As, as.
On your other side does. Okay. When I'm pouring, you bolt right off.
It's twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, that's what I thought.
He needs twenty-five feet from the front.
Right.
Here, and then twelve from the sides to meet zoning for that district.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And we're granting the variance either, so whether I grant a four, five, you know, five feet before four feet, one, one will either be an eight. Uh, foot or a, or a.
Yeah.
Seven foot variance, but either way, I'm going to be granting a side and rear yard variance.
Have a front.
But I, I'd have to grant, uh, under this plan, I'd have to grant the front yard. Because you're point nine feet closer to this Corning Street than the houses.
I mean, if, honestly, whatever it takes to, to be able to.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm just pointing it out. I, because it didn't apply.
As long as we can get, because the size is.
I think what Mark has, has described will work.
Yes.
Get you where you want to go. It's just a cleaner way for us to do it, because what you're asking for, we, I don't think we can grant.
Okay.
The way you've asked for it.
Okay.
And after some reason, you know, when you go to build on it and, and your builder goes and marks his corners before he builds, which you should do. And it doesn't jive and you come back and we'll.
Figure it out.
And if I, if I go by your plan here, it, I mean, they look, the street looks, the house looks parallel to the street. When I looked at it.
Yes.
It looked parallel to the street, so you're just going to continue that line down. Where your garage is, and you're going to have six point four feet between the garage and the house.
Yes.
And then you're going to have twenty-five feet from the front line here where the house is on Corning Street, back twenty-five feet. And you've got fifty feet, so if you've got, uh, twenty point nine, okay, that should leave you.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet plus, yeah, you, you, if I take that, you should have twenty-nine point something feet, uh, to one feet.
I mean, we could make them both four, Mark.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
So we got to make a motion out of that. Can you do that?
Well, actually, um, you could string that condition of the variance.
Yeah, would it be a condition that, that, because I, he didn't ask, I can't grant what he didn't ask for, and he need, he, in my opinion.
Why are they update the plans, uh, and make those adjustments before issuance of building.
Building permit.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I had asked, that he give a, a plan and just showing, but your garage would just be. Six point four feet from the house, twenty, it'll be twenty feet wide, but twenty-five feet deep.
Yeah.
But it will be in line with the side of the house. From Corning Street, so that we're not granting a frontage variance, because otherwise.
Yeah, building hangs off the side of the existing dwelling, then we have a, then, you know, then you're in violation of what's being granted, so you got to keep it in mind.
Yeah, you just say that's all, uh, on the street, so we're just pushing it back.
Move it back point nine feet.
Point nine feet.
So fronts of both buildings are the exact same distance from Corning Street.
Street.
That makes sense.
When they measure it, they'll have to just make sure they're twenty feet off.
Eliminates.
Twenty-nine feet off of Corning.
And this will raise up later down, down the road.
Right, but it shouldn't change your four foot, you know, bearing, because this looks to be parallel with the, the, the thing and then.
This is basically what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's based on the plan that Smith gave you, so, and then it, it'll push it back point nine feet, so I think. That is going to go that far back. So you got four feet, you know, five feet back there, so it'll leave you with four point one feet left.
Always happy to help a guy get a garage.
Anybody, uh, anybody else? On Zoom or anybody who wants to oppose? Is there anybody to speak in favor besides Mr. Whitcup?
And for the person on Zoom, if you wish to be heard, um, on this matter, just use your raise hand function now, so we know. Take that as a no.
Thank you. There's no winning. So just for the record, there was no other pro or con. And we have moved to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Uh, do we have a motion? Uh, you need to make the motion, I think.
Well, I'm not sure I can.
All right, I'll, I'll move that due to the very unique nature of. Of this, uh, plot coupled with the safety concerns of getting into and out of Dwight Road versus a side street. In that it's consistent with the nature of this neighborhood, I move to approve the variance subject to. Uh, a, a four foot condition on the northern boundary of the, of the chart that, of the, uh, plot that is consistent with the four foot boundary. On the eastern.
Right, yeah, that's right, Charles, yeah.
The garage would be in the.
The front of the garage will be even with the front of the house, the side of the house.
Gives you another point one of an inch. Um, but the intent is that it's, it, it is no further, um, closer to Corning Street than, than the houses.
But that needs a second. I'll. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's been granted, um, so just have to move, when you have your person do it, just make sure it's.
Yeah, one Paul comes back, you can just.
Yeah, when Paul comes back, he can just, he can just.
Just make sure the building foundations comport with the decision.
Okay.
In the way it's written.
So we're, we're actually, we're giving you an extra foot in there.
One point one foot, when you go to Paul. You're ready to go to the building.
If there's a problem, let us know.
So Paul's gonna need to redraw. He's gonna have to make some.
He'll have to give it to the, the, the building department when he gets his, when he goes for the building permit. We'll have to just give a revised plan.
Yeah, it's just, it came back like.
Yeah, it's just.
See, what happened is, because you're, our zoning says if you're, you're on a corner lot, you gotta meet both street frontages. And the requirement is forty feet.
Mm-hmm.
But you got a pre-existing house, and we have exemptions, when you have pre-existing houses that are already closer to the street, you can match. The closest house to the street within so many feet of your house.
And actually, it's not forty feet, it's twenty-five feet.
Oh, twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five.
But still, it's not. But this makes you. Go, we don't have to get, get, get.
Another bear.
You have a right to build equal to the house, and that's what we're giving you here.
And just to reiterate what we told the last applicant, you know, you do have one year from the date that the documents filed with town clerk. Um, and then after that year, if you need more time, you can come back or request assistance with this board. Um, generally, what that means is you have to at least start the process of getting your permit section, and then you're all set. Okay, um, and then I'll reach out to you tomorrow about next steps, so. There is, like, the last one, is there a twenty day appeal?
Twenty day appeal period, so we'll, we'll file within a couple days, so. So they have the eleventh, probably by the thirteenth.
Building or buying one and popping.
Yeah, I mean, really. You do have the right to start your preparations for the building permit. Um, just keep in mind that you're proceeding at your own risk. Somebody could challenge it.
Not likely.
Hoping to move as quickly as possible.
But you need a building permit, so, so you'd get the building.
Contractors, so I, they, they can. Share that part of it.
Yeah. So we just make sure he measures back twenty point nine feet, so it just, it has to be perfectly in line with the front, the side of the house, so that's all. And then I think you got more than enough to go twenty-five feet back, and we're granting a variance to give you this. Actually, point one feet more, one tenth of a foot.
Sounds great.
So we're.
Really appreciate it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
We don't have anything, and we gotta do.
Minute, though, we just gotta prove the minutes from the June twenty-third. I've read them. Does anybody have any question?
Everything looked good, we should remain with the minutes.
Yeah, we, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, who's second?
Second.
Second, Fran.
By Fran.
And it's unanimous. It is, we moved, moved to close the public meeting.
So far.
All moves.
All in favor?
Aye.